We are formally meeting on June 10th. Meeting on the town of Washington. The first thing I would like to do is get a roll call for the approval of the agenda. So I'd like to get a motion. So we do, I do want to propose one change. So I don't know, do we do a motion or we just do?
Good for the, what's the comments for the chairman of the meeting? So that would ask.
All right, I would ask that we add, we have received since these agenda were out, we received a notice of vacancy for the planning commission. So under new business B, I'd like to also add a planning commission vacancy announcement. Other than that, I don't have any other additions or changes to the agenda. I asked my fellow council members, do you have any changes there? Can I have a roll call vote to approve, Brad?
Yes.
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 All right. Thank you. We have minutes. It's on the May 13th meeting, 2019. Are there, I guess what we should do is we should have a motion to approve and then a second, and then we can have a discussion of any amendments or changes or what have you to them.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes for the May 13th council meeting as distributed.
And do we have a second?
Also.
Do we have amendments or changes or additions or provisions or additions? All right. Then they will go as is. Again, a roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Huh?
Yes. Do you abstain?
You can abstain.
I abstain.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Thank you. The, I wish I had some good news to report, but I don't have good news yet. All the signals seem to be good so far regarding the post office. But I don't have anything to announce sadly enough at this point, but it should be sometime soon. Outside of that, I do not have anything at this time to report from the mayor. Treasurer?
As you look through the additional bills paid for approval as well as the to be paid, you'll see some extra ones for something, for instance, an eff crane service. There was an additional bill near an emergency over the wastewater treatment plant last week where one of the Ayrers went down. So luckily we had a spare one. So the crane survived.
Nothing worse than drowning an Ayrer.
Nothing much else. So it was going pain.
Right.
So it was fixed within four hours and the SSS was running properly.
I want to commend whether it's Laura or Gail or whoever for handling that. And want to thank whether it's the deputies above or in nature or what have you, that it happened, that we were able to repair it so quickly and for a relatively inexpensive cost. Thank you to Laura and Gail and everyone and Brad. And anybody else?
One.
That we were able to get that done.
You'll see the fire department grant is on here. That's the usual castor that we have. There's nothing else unusual aside from the bills from the SSS.
All right.
Anything else you want to comment on?
Well, yeah. Go ahead.
Report, report the bank account summary speaks for itself. We do have some additional connection fees. Thank you. Dr. Martin had to get that all to put for us. So the public department to take it over. And that's it.
All right.
Any questions?
Can I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report?
Absolutely.
I'm saying.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Planning commission. We have the nearest representative of the planning commission. Any report?
We don't have a meeting in May. We will be having on June 24th.
Fourth month of it is, yes, the 24th. Do you have any burning agenda items?
Yeah.
Just keep working on, kind of figuring out where you guys are going for.
I think we are going to, um, here a letter of support for the land and conservation district.
Sorry?
Oh, that's all right.
All right, okay.
Thank you. Did you want to add?
So they.
Did you hear that? There's a, there's a up under that is going to be presented for planning of commission just a support to pass on to the town for support on not prospect going into conservation use. So if they want to be clear that it's not, that it's an agreement as a complaint.
Considering the option at one time, as I understand it, was that they were looking at the potential of, perhaps not great, but there might have been 50 little boxes on that.
Yeah, I saw it. Yes.
I think that sounds.
Great, yeah. This is all I can say.
I'm like, what a term.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Are they able to put the entire property or only the portion which is within the town?
They are going to have to approach the county for the county portion.
I see.
So we can only speak towards and.
Yeah.
At least that.
So then that would be the entire option.
Ultimately. Yes.
That's great.
Amazing.
That's in perpetuity.
Amazing.
Well, if they pop out and have to get off.
All right. Architectural review board does have a meeting on Wednesday. I do know they have two items on their agenda for their meeting on Wednesday, 12:00. So they will be meeting here at 7:00. Mr. Bennett?
Circulated by, you know, sure before the meeting, a draft of revised fee schedule for actions, applications, actions, and other matters related to land use. And very, I found out to me that it has a standard thumb up.
Fourty.
A wild lot from, from the old book. My, what I had in mind as I went through and tried to estimate what would be fair fee charging is that, is this something to the benefit of the individual or what is the benefit to the town? If there's mainly benefit to the individual, then the individual should bear the cost that the town has to go through, consider when it's sought in the application. So zoning permit, that's just sort of a sign off that somebody wants the building permit and just check all the records to make sure that what's there is in compliance with zoning and such like, such type of thing. Administrative permit, I don't know if one of those has been issued here in town, to my knowledge, but there could be a possibility that one would be.
John, what is that, an administrative permit?
Zoning administrator has, I think ordinance has certain authority to issue permits. And it asks for one of those things set out in ordinance. And zoning administrator has to investigate it, build record why it should be issued, it should be issued in accordance with the ordinance system, and then make a determination one way or the other, and issue it, and keep a record of the reasons for or against. What are the various considerations?
Can you put in there zoning administrative permit? Could we just add the word zoning so?
Oh, that's awesome.
Do you want to say that? I didn't know what that meant.
Okay. Yes, that's, that's the zoning administrator. Sign for this, that could, all that could be, maybe $250. Zoning applies or determination orders, sometimes it's like having a loan or something like that. The lender will want a letter saying that this property is in compliance with zoning, and that's that type of letter. Sometimes property owner will want a record of the status of their zoning or special use permit or whatever. And it involves some research and then drafting of the letter. And I figured that's probably about the cost for the town to do all that. Zoning or subdivision ordinance, tax amendment, minor 750 plus wherever you see the deposits you have here, that's where the town will receive deposit for the estimated advertising cost. And then after the case is concluded, if there's something left over, it's refunded to the applicant. If it's short, then the applicant's billed for. And that would be made clear to the applicant at the beginning of the process. So is the text amendment minor or major? And that would be a determination made by the zoning administrator again. And so you know it when you see it. Those are the ones we've got out of the tree as, as minor. So I can't think of one recently that was treated as a major.
Is that the one that was, used to be $500 on the old schedule? The amendment that says rezoning or taxed $500, is that the same?
While he's looking at that, I will just note, took me a couple of minutes before I figured it out, but in number five, there is a below in the beginning of the second line before amendment, which actually belongs at the very end of the first line after the asterisk. So not, because I had no idea what a below was versus a above.
Yes, that would be the very first one, minimum rezoning or taxed $500. And I make a distinction between text and map amendments because they are different types of cases. If a case is continued and it has to be re-advertized, there would be a fee for that plus the advertising costs. And that's really part of the policy of the council that, that the council doesn't wish to ask the public to come, citizens to come and give their input just to have the case continue. There's policy that the zoning administrator right now has to certify with clerk that the application is completely ready to build before it's advertised. But if the applicant still happens, said I want things for this reason, for that reason, this fee would apply plus the other type of cost. Appeal with zoning determin, administrative determination of $500 because that involves convening the board of zoning appeals, they're having an act on it, an administrative decision, typically there's legal advice involved. Zoning variance by BCA, town really doesn't work that way. The various waivers are handled to be, have historically been handled by council, not by, or zoning, but that is possibility, so some of that is in there. Waiver or modification of subdivisions, zoning sewer, water ordinance, or regulation.
Wait a second. Stop for a second. So let's go back to that. If you're saying that is normally done by contact with the town council and the town is being, is paying, is being billed by the town council for services and doing that, does that mean that that serves as a circumvention of paying this $500 fee by going to the council?
No, there's still a fee if you came to council.
No, to the, I'm sorry, the council SEL, not the council CIL. In other words, and what you're talking about is the zoning variance. You're saying that instead of doing that by the BCA or the, that, I'm sorry, not the BCA, the next one down, the, the, no, it was the zoning variance. You said that, you said that if there was some things that might, and some municipalities go to the BCA, but in the town's traditional role, it has gone to the attorney.
To the council.
To the council.
To the council.
Okay.
But all this comes, it comes before the council as, actually as an ordinance to amend it, and that's covered by the nice one.
Okay.
The fee would be the same, $500, except for that paid for advertising also.
Forgive me.
So John, should we strike that or just leave it in?
Well.
The chance that we want.
It's a possibility. A variance by the BCA is a matter of statutory interpretation, but there's no undue hardship on this or stuff. Whereas a waiver or modification by councils and legislative action, it could be granted under a much broader range of conditions than it could be by BCA.
So we should leave it in just to have it in there in case?
Just have it in there. All right. We should leave it in that waiver. Waiver of submission requirement, no fee, that's, if the fees are waived, there's obviously no fee. Special exception, new or amendment. The council hasn't really seen one of those that I can recall, but it is possibility under the ordinance. So I treat that the same as a special use permit. And considerations are very much similar, so I thought it was appropriate to go in that fashion. So 750 for either plus the advertising cost. If, if, if a special use permit had to be renewed and comes before council, it has to be advertised, the advertising cost plus fee of 250 to be done by the zoning administrator that signed it without the advertising. Council's gone away from, from having formal reviews. It's been, the last couple of special use permits, if there's no problems, what comes up at the end of the year, it's just, it moves forward without objection. So that would have limited application, but if council went to the, the, and special use permit required a formal review at least one year, then that would apply. Now, 15 is really getting in, putting it, that's in there, really anticipating, anticipating, excuse me, of HUD applications or complex zoning cases. Sometimes it's necessary to hire specialists, engineers, consultants, traffic engineers, land planners, to advise planning commission and council on these technical matters to consider these cases and how best to move forward that way, play it out in the best fashion, what should be the density, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So if that were to occur, that that would not become expensive at that. Now it would have to be paid by the applicant plus essentially $300 per contractor administrative fee for the town, line, handling all the things that are associated with that. So 16 is sort of a catchall, the postponement of a public here after advertising would be 350 plus the advertising. That's just kind of be a catchall, trying to discourage postponements where the public peers are very common and something. Comprehensive plan amendment. Most jurisdictions now, there's a rezoning application, it has to be a conformative comprehensive plan. If it's not, the practice, more recent practices require concurrent filing to modify a comprehensive plan. So the zoning case can be discussed in the context of the town's entire plan for itself, rather than the issues associated with this particular parcel that's asked to be rezoned or whatever. So it would be my view that if there were an application for a serious, what's called serious rezoning, or a HUD that involves complexity, that if, if it should not be incorporated comprehensive plan, then I believe it would be appropriate to require the applicant to also go through comprehensive plan issues at the same time. And that, that really is becoming one of our practice.
So is that where the HUD application fits in?
No, the HUD would be, is a separate item under 20. Right now, there's no PUDs on the map, although it can be anywhere. And if we have an application for the HUD, it would be $1,500 under 20, the third one. $1,500 plus the advertising. Rezoning for residential, $1,000 for the first parcel if there are additional parcels involved. Each additional parcel will be $500. For non-residential mixed use, it'd be $1,500, same as the HUD, plus the, if the additional parcel costs $500. Going back, 19, rezoning of other actions qualified for to be added to historic district or, might have been in our conservation district, no fee under the assumption that the town wishes to encourage those. And thus sort of public purpose. And if we jump back to 21, sometimes an applicant will come up and say, here's this piece of property, what is the maximum that could be done with it under the zoning permits? And zoning administrator has to figure that out and give them a straight answer to that. So that would be the charge when that comes up. And that does come up. When things eat up and things start to happen, people start looking around, that's usually the first step in the process is, is finding out what the possibilities are. And then you can actually get more specific as they go along. Administrative subdivision, there are, under the ordinance, a few subdivisions that can be made administratively. And if that were to happen, that would be a $600 fee, it's like a $1,000 for the, I don't know what for the straight subdivision. A subdivision's a kind of also. So I shifted through all those different jurisdictions that I showed you and talked to some of the people in zoning offices, and a lot of those, these people sort of gave you, sort of asked me, and they said, wow, we're really out of big, big cutters. So, so we've started. So this, if, if you look at a lot of other jurisdictions, these fees are rather modest compared to what can be charged. I'm going through a thing where I just, at one hand, a lot of people, so my daughter can build a house on this property that I gave her, and my fee, Ken's fees are over $200. So it's, these are actually rather modest, but at the same time, try to not have substantial expense fall back on the town and tax rates.
John, this is great. Thank you very much. I appreciate this. The, I don't know what town, town council members want to do. Do they want to look at this, let it percolate for a while before we approve it? Or do they feel comfortable approving it at this time? This doesn't need to go for a public meeting.
I believe that there was an ordinance adopted years ago, and the ordinance provided that the fees could be changed by resolution rather than ordinance. So that does not require public hearing, advertising, public hearing.
All right. Well, let's go ahead. I don't feel comfortable trying to resolution tonight, so we go ahead and put this. We've had two or three changes. Number two, putting a zoning in front of the administrative permit. Number five, excising below from the second line before amendment. And number 19, to add, I presume at the end before conservation use.
Conservation district.
Conservation district. Well, conservation district or the like. Okay, so I'll leave it to you to think about the best way to call it. Why don't you go ahead if you would, if other people have comments, other council members have comments to.
May I ask?
Yeah, well, let me just finish, which is, why don't you go ahead and line up the resolution for the June, July meetings?
Go ahead, Laura, and I've got a question for you. So ARB application fee is $2. So then someone's going to comment as a sign application for the ARB and it's $200.
$250.
$250.
Should be $250.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So if I was someone, I have a question, why is the difference? Did we just remove the word sign and say permits to be reviewed and approved by the ARB? I, I, I personally would hesitate to raise the fee that much. I mean, it is, it's, it's quite, as Patrick will tell you, I mean, people perceive that as an ordeal as it is.
Exactly. I mean, they could be coming in to section N, that would be about a $75 job.
Maybe $5.
And then they had to come back because they didn't have all of their eyes done. They might have to pay again.
Only one time, $25 fee.
How about, one approach would be a two-tiered, because truly some cases are very complex and have minor 25 and major a bigger figure. Because some of them.
Some of them are difficult. When you have multi uses in one building and they're all about, who is first, who is first, and we have 10 signs, it starts to be hard for someone to figure out what to pay.
How do we determine what would be minor versus major?
Leave it to the clerk. We got to discretion. W administrator.
Oh, that works.
You know, you sort of know these things when you see it. You don't have to think about that.
And then you always call you.
Paying this or that or however. However, if it's building in addition to historically significant structure, in my view, that would be more involved.
All right. So do we, I think just by voice, do we have a consensus on these points?
Well, do you want to raise the $2 to 25?
We want, yeah, I think, well, what we want to do is we want to change number three to a two-tier, either 25 or an amount for the town.
Is that 250?
It's 250 now. He's going to determine with that. Were you thinking that we would save the 250 for the second tier?
Two, well, 200 was mentioned, 200, 250, but still 250 for something, the complex application.
Well, let's leave it at 250 then. So do two, 20, have two tiers, 25. Well, let's leave it at 250 then, so do 2, 20, have two tiers, 25 and 250.
25 is not refundable if your application is not approved. So, that's another source of irritation.
But if they came back with a minimum, we wouldn't charge them another 25.
Okay.
Okay? We can save one.
Go ahead, go ahead, you don't need to do that.
I'm saying, if, if they came in, if they wanted to use another window, then we said, no, you have to come back again and show us wood windows, we wouldn't charge them additional parts.
Yeah, if they want to tear down a shed, and it's denied, just for a second.
I'll make a special case and be done at $2.
All right, so now that we're leaving the world of the hypothetical, coming back to the world that we live in.
The town's going to wind up considering a lot.
Yes, let's wind up a resolution. So, Ms. Bennett?
And then there was one other matter, you asked me to consider what might be sort of vision statement to guide the town in drafting a policy for renewal of franchises for utility.
Yes.
While I've been here, the town's never renewed a franchise. REC, predecessor REC came and asked, and then they were bought out by REC, and just never did it because they'd never offered us anything. And one of them locked us down for 30 years as the exclusive provider, without giving us any compensation whatsoever. As state corporation officials don't require the provide service, so they're not going to go away. So in my view, that was no bargain at all. Now, they had Comcast that started talking to us two or three years ago?
2009?
Ten years ago.
Yeah, ten years ago.
And I received a little gentle nudge from the person from Comcast on a monthly basis.
And I've heard that there's some other provider that's running cable through the county, and that was sort of concurrent with Comcast's renewed interest in having a franchise renewed. When they were before councils renewed at some point, there were some questions about satisfaction with the services that they offered, and I don't know the details about the channels or something. And I spoke with a gentleman about that, that that is something that would have to be addressed, and they addressed that. Everybody was happy after that. But the big question I have now for the decision statement, are residents of the town satisfied with the utility services that we receive? And projecting it out, say, five, 10, 15 years, what's on the horizon and what will the town need?
The, which are all good questions. So what I hear you saying is that if we were entered, to enter into a renewal of the franchise agreement, that it would lock us down for an extended period of time. If we did not renew the franchise agreement, there, there isn't a downside, or is there a downside?
On the cable part?
Yeah. So we're dealing with hypotheticals.
Well, I'm not as, really, a cable provider, but it would just be my impression that a cable provider that's got substantial investment plan, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, is not going to pull that out.
Right, I think, at this point, I would feel most comfortable in deferring this conversation between you and the gentleman from Comcast, but I think, I guess I would make a motion that, that the intent of the town council is not to sign a extension of a franchise agreement, or sign a franchise agreement, which is currently being put before us by Comcast, that we, we delegate it to the town attorney to have a conversation, before the town attorney makes a decision, and he comes back to the town council.
And what they proposed would just not be acceptable to council, overhead utilities anywhere by right without obtaining the town permit, or town review by anybody, any entity within the town, being the ARB, and I totally, that's just, it's not going to, plus, most of the time now, utilities are installed underground for any new construction, the question becomes, the tricky question becomes, when you have an existing structure, and then, say, cable was on the whole price, how does it get compared to a house?
Came buried mine, just went heck out a few months ago.
So I, I don't know how best to give you direction as we go forward, is that a motion for just a vote? It doesn't seem like this is an ordinance or resolution.
I understand what's being said, if no one has any objection to what the mayor's said, that I can proceed on a basis.
So you would continue to negotiate with Congress, negotiating, par, quotations with Comcast, and when and if there was any change or position, you'd report back to the council?
At this stage, it has a agreement that would be unacceptable, right, to council, and quite positive, and they haven't offered something. Except to lock us up in 30 years.
Is that, is that the term 30 years?
I, I think there's this, they have 10-year renewals, I think that's.
Yeah, which, which in today's world is ridiculous, because in five years, all the technology can change, and we may not be relying on physical cable.
And what if Verizon, just to pick them, came in and said, we're going to do fiber optics, throw a, whatever.
Yeah, because just the technology's going to change, it's going to have, and to be locked into a particular provider with no assurance that they will match and deliver evolving technologies, that, that's not our best agenda.
I think the way we see these franchise agreements is to negotiate something where the mechanics, the installation of the utilities are acceptable to the town, but it's not an exclusive, if you've got a franchise that can do it in accordance with these terms, but we can give a franchise to somebody else for something quite competitive to that.
Marion, Patrick, do you want to weigh in?
I, I feel the same way, Brad said, because technology changes, and it's ridiculous to do it.
You concur, Patrick?
I agree.
Okay, all right. I'll let you have a conversation just a minute. Anything else, something? All right, thank you very, very much for this information, and anticipating what I was going to ask you about after the meeting anyway, which is about that, I'm taking that off my checklist. Next, we have old business, out on the table, out front, was the proposed budget for 2019, 2020. I have copies here on the table with members of the town council, like to see it. Got a little more copy.
And just, I didn't bother to turn out new ones, but just so you know, what we discussed last month, changing number 47 from full canopy to general contributions that have been made.
Why I.
That was the end change in any of that.
Yeah.
Name of the line.
Okay. At this point, can I have a motion to approve the 2019, 2020 budget?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I'm going to offer that, you know, next year, we're going to have to have a tougher conversation, but if you change, the general fund is getting terribly low.
I agree.
So, picking a candle, but it's good for the year, but next year, by the recession, that's going to be more difficult.
Joe, can you say that again, this is harder to hear than you said?
I was just saying that we next year's going to be tougher budget conversation if revenue don't change, because we're maintaining perfectly low on the general fund that we've got to deserve, and so we're going to be careful of that.
We'll catch the final, and we'll report. You're going to come up this month, a lot.
So, having our feel of fortunes and optimism, ask for a voice vote, I mean, a vote call vote, Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
So, so approved, thank you very much. Street light update?
Well, if it's near our, we received two more bulbs, two of the same bulb we do at our.
Should I say that, that you should have liked?
You could, you could. Okay, on the corner of Main Street and Quarter, in the middle of Quarter, we had two light bulbs that have certain current filter ones now. So he, John Ocker would like us to try, there was two bulbs, same bulbs, but a different filter, so we got those today, and we're going to be putting them up, probably continuing up quarter and maybe slightly around this turn, I'll not say on grid, they're all in a line, and then we're going to number them. So as soon as I can get REC to put those other two bulbs up, we'll, we'll label them, and people can look and see which of those five that they like. He seems to think that this new filter will be even better than current filter.
Will you send an email out to town residents?
Absolutely. Yeah, I don't even put a notice on the KIA.
No, you don't go that far.
I mean, hit your bell on any walls.
Hear me, hear me! And so this process is, it's one resident that's literally complaining, you know, how long did it take to take the light bulb, but it is going to affect the whole town for a while, so let's get it right.
I noticed the one light near street criteria does not have it.
Oh, I have it here, is that where that, they took one bulb for me, because he.
Oh, okay, maybe that's it, because it's just.
Yeah, yeah, so I'll ask them to put that back on.
Okay.
They didn't tell me which one they took it off of.
Oh, okay.
Okay, it's the flame unit.
Yeah.
And we'll get the.
Architectural, I don't know what you're calling it.
The skirt.
The skirt, the flyer.
Well, that's in front of criteria.
Yeah.
I'll get it back, when I, when I ask them to put it in.
All right, anything else, comment? Increase the town permit, as we've already discussed, under the town attorney's report. New business, job description, now the town clerk's asked administrative assistant.
Okay, time out. As I mentioned in the email that I sent out, maybe 10 days ago, this has not only been vetted by Mr. Bennett, Laura and I spent substantial time on this, and what is in blue pink is what's recommended to be the town assistant position, and that enblacked me the town clerk position. But that was easier than separating it this time, because seeing it as a whole, you could understand the enormity of work that goes through this office.
Does that to a little town?
Yes, exactly.
Fortuna science is not very much.
Exactly, so I will separate these, once I get your comments, approvals, whatever, into the two separate positions, as, but as well, and also discuss the subscription a little further, and we'll be cleaning it up, as it's going through the final.
So, tonight, not only are we asking for any feedback, we also are seeking approval in order to begin advertising based upon this.
Yes.
And I should also say that Marion Kuhn, as the vice mayor, has graciously agreed to serve as the point person for this process, working with Gail Swift, to, to do a first screening of applicants down to a manageable number for the town council then to be able to review. So that in a nutshell would be the process that we would use. And I don't think we have any more details as to the dates of when the, the advertisement would be placed, and so when it opens, and when it would be closing for applications, and I will defer to Ms. Kuhn and Ms. Swift on those points.
And with Mr. Bennett's assistance in drafting the ad. Nothing's been papered in yet.
Mr. Bennett, what do you have to say?
And I wanted to be said, because Laura said I could say this, is that she is very willing to stay on, on a consulting basis, to help us with any training, and if necessary, do some of the administrative work until that position is filled, so.
On the hypothetical, it's just that she's retiring.
Yes, hypothetical. I, I would like it very much if you got a town that's, who are trained.
Before you go.
Before I go.
Sure. It'll be your first priority.
Not the assistant, this is going to jump into the deep end of the board, that the board have a lot of legal things that have to be done.
I want to give to some feedback, just looking at this, and to try to simplify it. So there's a town clerk, and then there's the town assistant.
Right.
But the town assistant, if you look at all the things the town assistant does, it's 91.9% bookkeeping, so, and there's 15 items under that, and 15 or 16 under town clerk, so it's like even, so why don't we advertise, I'm just thinking, instead of town assistant, bookkeeper, because it's, this is all financial.
There's a lot more involved than just bookkeeping, it's being the face of the town and being here, you know, on a day-to-day basis.
In addition to the town clerk?
The town clerk doesn't really have to be here on a day-to-day basis, town clerk, a good many of these are her responsibilities, person's doing the minutes or anything else can be done come home, can be done come home, you don't have to be here necessarily.
But the town clerk is the senior position.
There, I think what we're doing is, as I perceive this, as I look at it, there's two different things that are going on. The town clerk is the, the more likely, better term, the constitutional position, it's dealing with the running of things like the town council providing support to the town council, doing all the things that are required by law. The administrative position, the assistant position, is really serving as the receptionist, the face of the town, following up on inquiries that people have about, I saw a water leak, I was going down such and such street, and those kinds of things.
And all the numerous surveys and reports that have to be filled out and sent out back, there's order work forms, there's US census forms, there's US geography, and there's just all these forms that I handle, that I, that I, there's the renewal and insurance, there's all kinds of things like that, that not, the clerk wouldn't necessarily handle. That's all I'm saying.
And my, my own personal fear is if you call a bookkeeper, then you're going to find. someone who has a different set of skills, I think what you'd be looking for.
Yeah, so, but I, maybe assistant isn't the right type.
Assistant one?
Isn't the right type.
You said, because Laura carries both, and whose title is that?
No, I.
Town clerk, town assistant. But I, you can do whatever you want.
The duties for the assistant are overwhelmingly financial. We can change it from town assistant to some other type.
I, I can tell you that I can, I think that a bookkeeper might not fit, fit the job.
Oh, I agree, I don't think, I don't think the bookkeeper is the right person.
That's part of the responsibility. No, but that's, but it is bookkeeping that the person is doing.
I would defer to the wordsmith in our midst, to think of a good title.
Well, in, in all of those, I remember I gave you a bunch of docs that I got from BMO. Yeah, I'm wondering if there's a title amongst all those that you've got.
Not really, I'll go through them again, but most of them were town clerk, town manager, but I'll, I'll go through and look at those and see if there's a, a better title, and we'll share it.
And I think we want to avoid using the term administrator or manager.
Right.
Okay.
Because I think that's giving it too much.
Right.
So, you wanna do something below that level.
It's called a town clerk.
Could be.
Oh, that's nice.
Project.
Associate be associated.
Except if the town clerk can be a part-time position. These are both part-time positions? Probably administrative, the administrative portion, the assistant will use it now. Would be pretty much full-time.
Three-quarters time?
Yeah, three-quarters time, thirty hours. Right, plus thirty hours a week, something like that.
So, it could be a superhuman person to do both.
Sure.
Such as one of our present. They wrote the ball back to Laura.
I'll run that, and I don't see that happening.
Exactly. That's why she helped me so carefully, like, to separate them off.
Nicely done. So, badly, if you care how many months the wordsmith is, or, or the wordsmithing on the, hey, put this over here and throw that back.
I think, I think there's some, some, to what you said about that associate town clerk, I think because the town clerk is, is in some ways the way you're positioned because of its constitutional responsibilities, but the other person is an important person too, so I think it's you all that you figure out.
I'm thinking they carry the weight.
Well, I think if you.
I think they carry the weight.
If you call it associated or some other word, you can also build into there.
I think administrative assistant is fine.
Or the clerk on your absence, you know.
I don't see what.
Or it could be an administrative, what's another term? Not manager.
Administrator, assistant.
Oh, are you having director? Administrative director?
You want to manage, we'll work on. We'll check with everybody to see if you like it, so I don't think it should be assistant clerk.
No.
No.
I don't like that.
No.
Laura, Laura's right there, equal. I mean, they have all the things.
As far as, you know, what's.
You know, making sure the rules are paid, and then money, your board bills go out, and your parts for your place order are ordered, and all those things that make the town run every day, first is.
I wanna address a comment that you made, I think if we need to just have add out sooner than later. So, I think between the two of you and Laura, I think you all have to, we're not gonna be able to meet again in July and try to come together and try to figure out that title. I think, I know I would feel comfortable to defer that to you, because we wanna get this thing out.
So, you want to get the ad out when?
Soon.
Well, I mean, deadlines aside, the time, it's a couple of things.
I was deferring that to you guys to figure out the timeline.
Say, two, one, one.
Yeah, three.
Right.
Is that what we can, we can provide a little feedback, like you say, on some of these?
We want it to happen by then.
July one?
If Mr. Bennett can.
Some phone calls were deferred, Mary Ann.
But I think what we wanna do is try to have them by email versus phone, I would send.
I'm already calling.
Well, they can still contact Mary Ann, but if you want.
Sure, I'll, I'll send an email so you can bring it over, and then decide which ones you want to bring.
So, the process would be for you guys, over the next several weeks, Mary Ann and Gail to find this thing down. Timeline tentatively would be having that out, July first, and applications back by fifteenth?
Seventeen.
Fifteenth, Sunday.
Or whatever the, what's the Monday?
Monday is the fifteenth.
Monday is the fifteenth.
But just, just remember, we're talking like the rap news.
We say, uh, the.
Right.
It's when the paper, the paper would come out on the third.
And the deadlines are earlier.
Yeah.
All right, why don't we do, you wanna do with the next weekend after that, which would be the twenty-second, Monday after that, twenty-second?
Yeah, add to the paper on.
Maybe the twenty-fourth.
When did, on Monday, June twenty-fourth? Does that go there?
That's two weeks, essentially two weeks, yeah.
Okay. And then, applications due by the twenty, what did I say, twenty-second of July? And then, you all do winnowing and present candidates at the August, and at that point, Mr. Bennett, will we be going into executive session to review candidates?
Will there be a committee, a subset of the council that's gonna screen it first?
There, yes.
Okay, so, and then, once that's called, then those applications become, come before the council with the people to be interviewed?
Three people to be, so what we'll have to do, so they'll come with the final three, and then the town council members will have to interview them?
That's how typically, in the past, was the assistant mayor that interviewed.
Mayor and chairman.
And then, you know, the three of us agree on a candidate present at the August meeting.
But that becomes a town meeting, it's the three of us.
Oh, well.
The two of them.
The two of us, yeah.
Good.
As you'll note, Mary Ann, I will already, so.
So, when that comes back to the council, that would be appropriate to go into a closed session, discuss that personnel matter related to a, a specific considered employee.
So, between the, between the twenty-second of July and the August meeting, you will not, will not only do the winnowing down, but also you and I will be interviewing the candidates.
The, the top three that Mary Ann and I.
And then we will present a, of a candidate at executive session at the August meeting.
Or candidates, right?
Well, what we'll do is probably do a.
Ranking.
Ranking.
So, you're gonna hire one person to do all of that? And we may find the assistant.
I'm not gonna make a commitment to, to anything of this.
I'm curious, that's what, what's my thing?
Fine, too.
We need half-three candidates, presumably we could pick two.
Well, one might be good.
Right, what I'm saying, you got three, you might have the right, some are the combination of both positions.
Or there's one, I guess, one, they type in, it doesn't matter, so that.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Would you give it to us, to express interest or stop?
We know on, on, it's all on some data away. Okay, and here's what, and this is the only way to be fair, no phone calls, everybody else is in their resumes. That has to be in the ad, yeah, Bennett.
Absolutely.
All right, six.
Email only, should we set a separate email account, or do you wanna? Yeah, for towns. Now, we'll set a separate email.
Send it to the town, and then I will send it to.
To Mary Ann.
To Mary Ann, and you, I assume. We both got one together, right?
So, it'll be the Wash BA.
All right, so, again, I may have the date wrong, was it June twenty-third?
Twenty-twenty-second.
Twenty.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, there's one of the ads will be in the paper, the deadline will be the twenty-second of July, after that, Mary Ann and Gail will winnow down, and then Gail and F.C. will interview. Right, and then at the August meeting, and the August meeting is what? Does anybody know what the time there is?
August twelfth.
August twelfth, all right, is when we will.
Close session.
We will have a close session and bring it to the council.
Does this person have to be a county resident?
No.
No.
All right, are there any objections to this process from members of the town council? Or to the job description? If the, if you do have changes or amendments, please pass, please pass them on, or please blast them on to Gail and Mary Ann.
Is there any value to going beyond the papers to, like, on the.
Yeah, I was thinking, I was going to go, think in D I com, because I did that for, so the systems, and I had gotten ninety replies, and I have to tell you, they were amazing.
Let's go, then, I'm comfortable with the meeting.
Can we get this approved first, proportionally first?
Yeah. Yeah, I just asked if there are any objections to this, to what has been written in terms, generally of the job description from many members of the town council. Kind of a negative way of doing it, but I, I'm happy to put that in a positive and say, all right, council members, I don't think we have to do any kind of vote, it's a voice confirmation, Mr. Bennett, on this. Is there, all those in favor of the job description with any additional amendments that may come from Mary Ann or Gail? Those in favor of this job description, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If you have minor alterations, please pass them to Gail and Mary Ann.
Mr. Bennett's already blessed.
And, and, so it's being submitted on the twenty-fifth. All right, any other questions on that? Never let, he said that the town of Washington is not a land of opportunity, we have two vacancies to announce, sadly, we have two residents of the town who are leaving, they are married to each other, and they have been of extraordinary benefit to the town by providing guidance and sharing their wisdom and expertise with us, speaking of Samuel Thomas and Alan Combs. We have admired their insight and their thoughts and their service to the town, and I'd like to just take this moment to publicly thank them for the time and energy that they have given to the town, it has been invaluable. That being said, we do now have an opening on the architectural view board, and we have an opening on the planning commission. If there are candidates for those, the procedure, if I recall correctly, is for them to write a letter of application.
Letter of interest?
Letter of interest to the town clerk, and then you will review.
We need to have that probably by the Monday before it counts.
Do we want to try to do it for July, or do we want to do it for August?
Because it's the summer.
Because it's the summer.
I didn't mean for August.
That's what I'm thinking.
Need Bush.
Yeah. Not that there, we'll have to bar the door to prevent all the people from wanting to rely on it.
So, no need to, for eleven, like, just let the fifth of August.
Yes.
Both of these positions have to be residents.
Have to be.
Residents.
Town residents, both these positions need to be town residents. Right, anything else that anybody wants to add on those two vacancies? All right, public forum, we open up the meeting to the public and welcome you for your endurance, if nothing else. Yes, sir?
Two observations, one, probably all of us have sat through some kind of a meeting about public utilities in the county, especially technology, but many of those reports from people who actually know about this stuff suggest that our numbers, our demographics, do not make us particularly lucrative commercially for some of these vendors, we can't change that, so I agree with everything, I have no, no comment on the discussion, but I just raised that as a concern, that a commitment's a two-way street, I don't know what's gonna happen to residential numbers in the town of Washington over the next ten years, I don't have crystal ball. But if I were a vendor of technical services, and these upgrades are gonna cost me a bunch of money, I'm not gonna make it in the town with a lot of competition or without a sort of a monopoly. So, it's just, I'm not an expert in this, but I've heard enough of these discussions in the county about other kinds of services, that these people just don't make enough money off of us, so we don't get a whole lot of attention, and we don't have much bargaining position. Just putting that out there for, Mr. Bennett, who's got the, the job. Who's the forerunner for REC that?
Allegheny.
Allegheny, and they pay the town a franchise fee, about thirty, thirty-five hundred dollars a year?
A hundred, twenty dollars a month, and, and.
I thought it gone up.
But anyway, your point is.
We're still getting that from REC.
They, they're still paying, because we, I was talking with them about the franchise agreement, he said, we're not gonna pay anything.
Well, they are.
That's what he told me.
They're still paying.
But your point was, like, the basis, about.
Can't contest is not.
There's no, with a, a franchise agreement, they still have no incentive to upgrade. You know, that's why it gets you as tall grass, and if they're not paying us anything, and you lock them in, and they, and you have no, no cloud with them anyway, why do it? So, I'm just mentioning that we, we have some realities in the town, especially the counties, maybe not at all, they might have a good position, but I, I, if you got the right angle into it, I'm pretty willing to say.
I appreciate your comments that we should be sensitive.
Yeah, the second one is, there's always two things, at least about job titles, one is you want them to be descriptive, but two, you wanna be sure you get the best candidates applying for the job, so as I'm sitting here listening to what I would think those jobs meant, listening to the title of assistant, I'm not sure that's really the best thing for the town, and even if the, the hours and the pay aren't hierarchical, I don't think there's any doubt in the public perception, town clerk is a real position, I mean, that, that is a known kind of entity, it's, it's, it's an honor, it's a distinction, it's maybe not as grand as being town mayor, but in many ways, to be clerk of a town is a big deal. What about deputy clerk? And the other question I have is, are you clear about line of reporting? It's clear that the clerk reports to the council and has a special working relationship with the treasurer and the mayor. To whom will this other position report? Directly to the mayor and the, and the treasurer, to one or the other, to the full council, or to, to the clerk? If I were setting it up, I think I would have the town clerk maintain the relationship that historically has existed, and have the second position report through the town clerk, even if the town clerk works fewer hours. even if the town clerk works fewer hours. No? All right, I defer to the person who's been doing it.
Because, because there's just many things that...
So they would have a direct line to the council?
Because that would not... There's just a lot of things I don't think that the clerk would have to be involved in. Financial deposits or the...
To whom will the second position report?
You were just talking about that, probably to the mayor and the treasurer.
You're saying that the two positions are equal, isn't that what you're saying?
We are equal, that may, that may be part of the...
Well, if, if that's the chain of reporting...
I'd request you, though, that the town clerk has a certain panache.
Yeah. And you're going to get a certain kind of applicant for that. I don't, maybe we limit the, the pool too much, but as town financial assistant, reporting to the treasurer, the right way to go.
I'm not sure that, I, I agree with the very first person in that when you use the term assistant, the position loses a lot of its gravitas. And I think the kind of people that we want are not really going to be enthusiastic.
Well, especially hearing the last comment from our incumbents. It, this is a weighty position. I know you don't like the idea of town manager, town executive, but that's almost what it's kind of down to.
Well, I'm going to say, okay, let's say, um, this non-clerk person is sitting at a desk and there's a major water leak. Why should she go through the clerk to resolve that? She should go directly to the mayor.
Right. I think that's just, when my, when I use the term associate, we can call deputy, whichever it's, I think you also want to put in that description, in the actions, so the clerk, they're acting on behalf of the clerk, I mean, right?
I don't think, I don't think you need to have that set.
You think they're independent?
I do, okay.
You may find that that's not true.
What I don't want to do is, I want to be sure that there is a value to it process, a regular value to the process, be it annual review or what have you. I don't want to burden the clerk with having to do that review for something that the clerk really is not hired to have extensive knowledge of.
His tempers, his town administrators act or not.
Town administrator, I think, starts running into, um, perhaps more, giving it more weight than I think this position. This position, because you're such a small town, as I understand it, this position is, is handling a broad spectrum of things, from basically fixing a leak in the toilet in the town hall and being a receptionist to managing crises on behalf of the town council, such as a water leak or something like that. I mean, there's a, so it's a broad spectrum, and so at one end, they're doing things that you might have given to a director level position. On the other, on the other side of the spectrum, they're doing things that really are an assistant's position. So that, to me, seems to be the conundrum.
Well, the term assistant generally has a modifier, because it tells you what they're assisting. So they assist the treasurer, they assist the mayor, they assist...
That's why we talked about, Mary Ann and I are going to get together and we're going to, and Brad has sent me a whole bunch of job descriptions, Mary Ann, I'll go through those again and see what we come up with.
He sent those to me and picked up all that and they're saying, yeah, I think I still might, I still have it, but I'll rethink them some other time.
1965, under assistant west coast promo man.
My comment mostly means I hate for you to miss a good applicant, because they see that the job title is assistant.
Exactly, yeah.
I don't want to be assistant.
Good point.
Now, this, this raises a, an interesting issue that, that, um, I've, I've really sort of overlooked in reviewing these documents, but the clerk has certain legal responsibilities that can't be delegated, be delegated. However, there are certain things that could be done in her absence that might be necessary to keep moving things along, like signing ordinances, resolutions, certifying minutes. I don't know how much of that...
So, so would you call the title, whatever the title is, plus and deputy clerk?
That would certainly end up being the effective responsibilities.
Or would you just put that in the job description as another bullet point?
It should go in, in the job description, and what you call it, is what you call it. I mean, I don't think I'd call it, just responsibility, the council wants this fit going and once they settle down, want to see what of those responsibilities that you would allow that person to do in the absence of the clerk.
I'm just thinking of our deputy, because in the county, if there's a commissioner, right? Deputy commissioner. But you can't, you can't call this person deputy, you know, is that right?
Consider we, what other doesn't really deal with that, you know, maybe, anyway. I'm not going to be deputy clerk.
No, I think we put that, and will not use grand clue box. If that fits.
I just sent that to you.
I'll look at it.
All right.
You trust that, you trust that Mary Ann and I to come up with the...
Mary Ann, as always, you have provided us with good thoughts.
You're going to do it and you hate to get it wrong. And so, this is probably one of the most significant and the greatest changes in a long time in the town, probably since they started actually having to beam off somebody's porch. So, um, I mean, a transition from an incumbent like Laura, it's very, very difficult capturing all the things she's been doing and getting the task to appropriate people who will, in time, do it as well as she has. But divvying things up like this is always a challenge. I'm not so concerned about your functional descriptions, I'm sure you're going to do a great job on that. I'm concerned that when you advertise it, that the caliber of people that you're going to need to do these jobs understand that and apply. And they aren't frustrated when they find out what the jobs really are. But that's, you've got good people working on it, I just think that those are issues. I, I do think you really want to know and have it in the job description, the, the chain of command, though. To whom do they report?
Oh, that's the governor.
Right. Thank you.
Nancy, any comments from you, Kier? All right, we'll close the public forum. There is no closed session. We have adjourned. Unless there's anything else that anyone would like to bring up.
Make a motion, you can.
I'll say it.
All those who can, please, invite boys, vote.
I understand.